All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Montgomery ISD Special Meeting of the Boarded Trustees, June 30th, 2020, 6:00 PM. The first thing that we're going to do is say the Pledge Allegiance of Allegiance. If you guys will please stand up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state Texas, one state under God and one indivisible.
So we do have, before we get into comments on the board, the first agenda item tonight is the hearing for citizens to present to address to the board about the budget and proposed tax rate. If there's anyone here to speak on that.
We will have a short, five-minute presentation by the CFO to inform the public.
Okay. So I'd like to call Chris Lynn up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the end of the budget process for the 2020-21 budget year. And so tonight, what I want to do is just take a couple of minutes to recap what we've gone through and to present the proposed budget that you're going to be adopting later on this evening. So... So just real quick, like I said, I know most people are here for something else tonight, but this is just a formality that we need to go through. So we're going to review our budget process. David, I think it went away. Okay. And then I'm going to present to you the budgets for the General Fund, Child Nutrition Fund, and Debt Service Fund. And then on a later agenda item this evening, you will actually adopt those three budgets as required by law. So just a real quick overview of what we've gone through. Since my arrival here on April the 1st, we have had budget meetings with campus principals and department directors. During those meetings, we reviewed staffing levels and their campus and department allocations. We talked about needs for each campus and each department. And then during those meetings, we allocated preliminary budgets. The board has had workshops on May the 5th and June the 1st, receiving updates. And then we also had conversations at the last regular meeting in June regarding budget as well. And so tonight, like I said, this is the final chapter of the budget process. You are being asked tonight, you're required by law to adopt three budgets: the General Fund, the Child Nutrition Fund, and also the Debt Service Fund. And so on this screen, you see the official budgets for General Fund and Child Nutrition. For General Fund, revenues of $76.1 million with expenditures of $77.8 million. As we discussed earlier, that is a deficit budget of approximately $1.7 million. We have gotten the message that that is not the desired outcome at the end of the fiscal year. And so we will be continually working and monitoring the budget throughout the fiscal year to honor the board's wishes, to make sure that we do not have a deficit budget come June 30th of 2021. Okay? The other budget there on the screen is the Child Nutrition Budget. And you can see that the Child Nutrition Department has proposed a budget that is balanced: revenues of $4.7 million with expenditures of $4.7 million. And then, as I said, the last budget that you are required to adopt tonight is the Debt Service Budget: revenues of $22.9 million with expenditures of $23.5 million. Just to explain a little bit about the Debt Service, that is the budget that pays for all of the outstanding debt of the district. So the new facilities that were built in recent years, these are the interest and principal payments on those bonds. Okay? And that's only what that money is used for. Okay? So that is the extent of my presentation tonight. I just, by law, needed to present that information to you in a public meeting, and then you will actually take action on it later on in the agenda. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. With that, we're going to go ahead and go into comments to the board. We do have a couple of comments. One thing that I would just remind everybody that's making comments, that we ask you to limit it to five minutes so that everybody has a chance to speak. We also can't respond to you. If we don't respond to you, it doesn't mean that we don't agree with you or that we do agree with you. It's just, we just, by law, can't respond to you at all. So with that, we're going to go ahead and call Bill Chulko. Thank you. The next comment to the board is Barbara J. Ward. Thank you for that. With that, we're going to go ahead and go into the action items for the board meeting tonight. The first is to consider the approval of the amended 2019-20 budget.
Mr. President, I'd like to withdraw that action because we took that action last meeting.
Okay. So I'm not sure that everybody heard that, but basically, we approved that last meeting, and so we're going to withdraw that from the agenda. The second agenda item, considering the adoption of the 2021 General Operating Budget and Child Nutrition Budget. And this was what Chris presented earlier today. Does the board have any questions about that?
No, sir. I move to adopt the 2020-2021 General Operating Budget and Child Nutrition Budget as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Here you go. I could hear that.
Moving on to the... Motion passes. Moving on to the next agenda item, consider and adopt the 2021 Debt Service Budget. Did the board have any questions about that? That was also presented by Chris earlier.
Yeah, I did have a question. Chris, on the Debt Service Budget, obviously, it looks like our... There's a deficit there as well. How... Can you explain a little bit on how we have a deficit for that particular section of the budget, please?
Sure. That is based on an assumption that, since we're not talking about tax rate or approving tax rates this evening, that's based on the assumption that the Debt Service tax rate would stay as it was for the 1920 fiscal year. So you have an opportunity to erase that deficit if you choose to by adjusting the tax rate a little bit in August, but I did not want to make that assumption for you.
Mr. Dossie, I have a question. Are you... Mr. Simmons? So aren't we required by House Bill 3 to lower our tax rate in August?
Yes. The M&amp;O, the Maintenance and Operations side of the tax rate will be lowered. We do not have an... The Texas Education Agency is supposed to notify us the first week of April what our maximum tax rate that you can adopt would be. We do not have that information at this time. But yes, the tax rate will be lowered. The Maintenance and Operations tax rate will be lowered.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Have any motions?
Just a procedural question, Mr. Dossie. Sorry. On the action item, it says the General Operating Budget and the Child Nutrition Budget as separate. Okay. All right. So for the record, can we repeat that? Just, Mr. Lynn, would you say that again?
So the motion would be to approve, to adopt the 2020-21 Debt Service Budget as presented.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the 2020-2021 Debt Service Budget as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion passes. So at this point, we are going to adjust the agenda just a little bit, and we're going to go into the approval of the Compensation Plan after we go back into private session. We're going to go back into private session and talk about the budget, as well as discussing the loan finalists for the superintendent of schools, as well as personnel. We understand everybody is here to hear about all that, and we will get back to you as soon as we can. Okay. So we're coming back from a closed session, and we do have a few things that we have to get out of the way first. We have some very exciting news here, but we do have a couple of motions that we need to make first. Trey, you want to go with that?
Sure. As the first action item coming out of closed session, I'd like to approve the amendment of the hiring schedule for the district compensation plan as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another, the second motion that we have here relating to personnel that we talked about in closed session.
As presented.
Yes. I make a motion that we accept the personnel as presented.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a very exciting next motion related to the principal at Montgomery High School. So with that, who would like to make that motion? And by the way, I've never seen Bobby Morris as excited about this as ever on any hire. So we're all very excited about this. So who would like to make the announcement, the motion?
I'll motion to... I know the name, and I've forgotten the language, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize. I motion to approve Andrea Schur as the principal at Montgomery High School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Now, the last one that we're going to talk about before we kind of give the formal announcement, I wanted to kind of tell everybody what we did to come to this point in our decision-making. So the first thing that we did, because we've kind of been behind closed doors, and whether you know it or not, this free job has been very time-consuming over the last month. We actually started with submitting a request for proposal to search firms back in April. We interviewed three search firms out of a number that we... that were submitted. We selected Thompson &amp; Horton, who is a very well-known and respected search firm in Texas. And the reason why we selected them was we wanted the absolute best. So we wanted to start the process with that in mind for Montgomery. The second thing we did whenever they came, Thompson &amp; Horton came on board, was they asked us to, each board member, to provide 10 to 12 names of people from the community that would be on focus groups. Those names were people, were teachers, administrators, respected people in the community. We had students, just a lot of different people that actually, and I think we had this in a previous board meeting, the overall results of that, incredible participation from the participants that we had recommended. And from that, we heard some themes about what a superintendent in Montgomery should have and what they should be. We then had Thompson &amp; Horton set out and start to gather applications for superintendent. In the superintendent search, we had somewhere around 45 applications and very, very accomplished people that put their name in for Montgomery. I mean, I'm sure you guys know, but Montgomery is a very respected district, and this is a very highly sought-after job. And so we, Thompson &amp; Horton, helped us to come to a list of maybe 10 to 12 that we then narrowed, we looked through every single one of them on the list, looked at their qualifications. We all agreed as a board which top six we wanted to bring back for interviews. We then, a couple of weeks later, brought back those top six. We interviewed each one for two hours, and we asked them very detailed questions as a board, things like what they would do in certain situations, what's important to them, what is... How does their district compare to Montgomery? And so for those two hours, we got to know each one very well. We then, as a board, decided on two lone finalists, or not lone finalists, but two finalists to bring back for second-round interviews. At that point, we brought back two finalists of the interview process back to the school. We did second-round interviews with them. Each one of them, we spent probably three and a half hours with them each night, asking them very detailed questions about their backgrounds, about certain situations that were going on in Montgomery, what they would do in those situations, how that compared to their own districts. We did our own research before those interviews to find out what... if they had anything specific that we needed to ask them about. And from that, we selected one person to really go forward with the last phase, which was really checking out their references. And this is probably where I would say, we knew the final candidate very well at that point, but the references that we talked to were really unbelievable. We talked to 20 references. Each board member called references on the final selected candidate. I don't know about you, but I don't even know if I know 20 people in general. But they overwhelmingly voted their approval of this candidate. It was really unbelievable. The last part about that was, and this is not, definitely not the lowest on the list, but just as a comment, this board has been very unified as part of the process of going through this. You know, we... Some people think that, you know, when you have disagreements on the board, that that's a bad thing. To us, that's not a bad thing. We have disagreements on things, and we believe as a board that that's healthy. But in this process, it's been a very unified effort of all of us to go through all of these interviews, select the right candidate. And I will tell you, to a board member that's here, we all recognize how important this process is for Montgomery, and all of us have a vested interest in making this the best selection possible. So who do we select? We selected Dr. Heath Morrison. Dr. Heath Morrison is actually probably on the Zoom call now. And after I talk about him a little bit more, we're going to ask him to come on the line and kind of say hi to the district. Dr. Morrison was, he's been a high school principal and really at every level, but where it really started was actually in a different Montgomery County, in Montgomery County, Maryland, where he was the community superintendent of Down County Consortium at Montgomery County, Maryland. After that, he actually moved to Washock County School District in Nevada, where he was superintendent of over 70,000 students, a huge district. Whereas in 2011, he won National Superintendent of the Year. So think about that. Amazing person. After that, he moved to Charlotte Mecklenburg, where he was the superintendent of over 140,000 students. This guy is unbelievable, and I'm really excited to introduce him to you because I think what you'll see when we start, when you hear from him, is some of the things that we... You know, the numbers are one thing, and we, you know, they're impressive, and the guy really is impressive. And by the way, I didn't mention that after Charlotte Mecklenburg, he became president of McGraw-Hill in the private sector for seven years. So the guy is just unbelievably impressive. But, you know, that's not the reason why we chose him. All those things are impressive, and he's had an impressive career. And so one of the things that I would say, and the board members can chime in here too if they want to, is that, in my view, the reason why we chose him as our finalist is that he really represented the district where we want to go, not tomorrow, but in five years. In 10 years, where do we want the district to go? And that is the premier district in Texas. And so one of the things that he repeatedly told us was that he's interviewed for other superintendent jobs, and he's constantly asked to come be their superintendent, and he's turned down many. But one of the things that made him attracted to Montgomery was that we truly believe that we can be the premier district in the state of Texas. It's not something that a lot of people just say. We really believe that we can be. And so, and this closely aligns with one of the other foundations that we have here, the MISD Education Foundation, which I think it shows... Last year, in the MISD Education Foundation, we adopted a vision, which I think applies here, which is we want to elevate the programs and tools of the students to give a competitive advantage, to dream big and succeed. And when I think about what we want to do with a superintendent, we didn't want a superintendent that would just move the ball a little bit. We want a superintendent that is going to bring us up here. We want to go big. We want the Montgomery to be the premier district in the state of Texas. And so some of the things that we thought about when we were talking about this, you know, why can't we have a partnership with Exxon? Why can't we have an astronomy lab at Montgomery ISD? Why can't we have a lab with CNC machines that, you know, we have these public-private partnerships? And we can... partnerships, and we can do amazing things? And so we believe that superintendent allows you to do that. When we talked with all of his... These 20 reference checks that we did, some of the things that they consistently said, "The guy has amazing energy. He's high-energy, and he's... He holds people accountable." And that's not a bad thing, but it's going to be hard for some people. We understand that. But when you're trying to... When you're trying to make big change, and when you're dreaming big, you have to move fast, and you have to shoot for the stars. The other thing that they told him... So we asked every single one of these people that were... Some of them were the heads education person in the state of North Carolina. We asked board members that he had been on in the past, both in Reno, Nevada, and also in Charlotte. And they all said, "Hey, I would hire him again in a heartbeat. Don't let this guy get away. He's a thoroughbred. Just let him go, and just give him direction and let him go." That's the kind of person that we want in Montgomery. We want to shoot big and go for the stars. And that's why we're very proud and excited to bring on Dr. Heath Morrison. So with that, unless the board had any other thing that they wanted to mention, we need to make a motion.
I'll move to approve Dr. Heath Morrison as lone finalist for superintendent of schools for Montgomery Independent School District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So with that, I think that we have Dr. Morrison on the Zoom. Yes. All right. The first thing that I wanted to do while we bring Dr. Morrison on the line is... Dr. Morrison, I don't know if you were listening to the board, but we have just unanimously... We unanimously voted to make you the lone finalist at MISD. So with that, please take it away. He can hear us?
I don't know if he can hear you.
Is he muted?
I can't. Can you hear me?
There we go. Yes, thank you. Yes. Dr. Morrison, I don't know if you heard, but the board just voted to approve you as the lone finalist at MISD. So with that, please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. Dossi, I... Just let me begin. I am thrilled and honored and humbled to be selected as a lone finalist for Montgomery ISD. Montgomery ISD has an incredible brand, and one of the things that people say about brand is your brand isn't what you say you are, it's what people say about you. And the state of Texas, this community, has so many amazing things to say about Montgomery because of phenomenal teachers, excellent principals and staff, and it's a community that really loves and supports its schools. And it's incredibly exciting and a big part of why I am so thrilled to have this opportunity to come and join this community.
Well, thank you so much. You may not know, but your face is frozen on our... On our screen here. And it's not very good pose either. But one of the things that... Thank you so much for coming on the line. Amy, go ahead and put him down. That's terrible. But with that, I just want to say thank you to the community for allowing us as board members to go through this process. We are all very tired. It has been a very long process. We believe that we've chosen the best person for this job. We didn't... We didn't... We didn't go for the easy choice. We went for the best choice. And so with that... Yeah, there he's back. Okay. Did you have anything else that you wanted to say, Dr. Morrison? Oh, never mind.
Superintency ever. But what I would say is, is when you're a superintendent, you often hear, "You want to run your school district like a business." And I've had that opportunity to be in the private sector for a few years, and I've learned a lot, and I've appreciated that opportunity, but I have been really wanting to get back into that mission-driven work of being part of a school district. And I wanted to be part of a school district that was on that journey from being really, really good to perpetually great, to be a school district that served every single one of its students, and didn't just have the words of "We want to be the best school district in the state," but that really was committed to that. And that's what drew me to Montgomery ISD. And so I'm really excited about this opportunity. I can't wait to start reaching out to staff. I've already begun today, had a long conversation with the interim superintendent, who's extraordinary, and we had a great conversation. I will reach out to staff starting tomorrow, principals, start to talk to teachers and parents and community leaders, and really begin that journey for me of listening and learning and to think about how I can add value. I enter this eyes wide open. I know that there are so many challenges right now, a global pandemic, the need to bring our staff and students back safely to school, and then the economic downturn. So there's lots of challenges, but there's even more opportunities. And truly, there is this opportunity in Montgomery ISD to be the premier school district in the state of Texas. And I know we can get there. I appreciate the leadership of this board. They are extraordinary. They spend a lot of time. We've had many, many conversations. They've had so many conversations with individuals that I've been privileged to work with, and I know their deep commitment. I know why they serve on this board, and I am so honored that they have selected me as lone finalist. So leadership is about service, and I intend to provide the best service I can to be the superintendent that Montgomery ISD deserves. So again, thank you. I'm humbled. I'm excited and ready to go.
Thank you so much, Dr. Morrison. I'm sure we'll be in touch soon. So with that, we're going to go ahead and close down the meeting. We will have some... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, please.
I just, before we wrap up, I wanted to just say thank you to each and every one of you up here. I think the community should know... You said it earlier. I think we truly came together as a board. I think we learned a lot about each other. We learned a lot about this district. We learned a lot about how to work together, and we learned a lot about how to listen to each other and listen to the community. It's kind of tough being up here because everything happens behind closed doors, and there's laws and Open Meetings Acts and violations that you can get into trouble with, but I'm very proud of this board, and the last 60 days is why I chose to be on this board. And so thank you to each and every one of you. It was a... It was a time vampire, but I think we made an excellent choice, and so I really appreciate each and every one of you.
So with that, I think we're going to go ahead and close. There will be a formal statement that will go out after the meeting, I believe. And so anyways, with that, we're going to go ahead and close. Thank you so much.